And the chair keeps mixing the two of us up because our first name starts with L.
And so when she does it, we switch nameplates up front so she can get it right.
You both wear glasses. I mean, there's a lot of similarities there, so.
Well, a few similarities. I'm kind of missing one digit.
A little bit.
Yeah, Geneva, she had a meeting at, uh, I have had a five o'clock and so she asked me if I could get things started. First of all, welcome Connor. Why don't you tell us about yourself? I already read your application, but these guys haven't.
Uh, yeah, Connor Jones. Um, I moved to Far West last March. So I grew up in Harriman down in, uh, Salt County. And my wife has lived in Plain City, so that's how I got to know the area. We moved into the Parkside Estates, uh, located there on. Yeah, me, I went to Weaver State for college, um, studied accounting on the CPA right now. And, yeah, I got two, two boys at home, really, really young boys. Two and a half year old and a four month old, so not really sleeping right now.
I can still understand that. Okay, well, I know, uh, Darren and I were, along with the mayor, Anthony was in that interview. We were quite impressed with how, I think we mostly focused on how you kept referring back to Harriman. And you grew up in Harriman, so you saw it from a little town to something then. And everything that you pointed out and everything that, I think that's what impressed us the most is your observation and referring back to Harriman. And what you've seen and, and things like that. So we're glad to have you here. Let's just go around the room, start with you, Darren.
All right, all right. I introduced myself last week in the interview, but that's fine, but, so I'm Darren Roy Lance. I've lived in Far West twenty-three years. So I saw it go from a small place to what it is now. I can't remember, it was probably like three or four thousand people back then. But, uh, um, I work at J D Machine in Pleasantview as an engineer. And have a wife and five kids and, and yeah, that's about it. So been on the planning commission. This is my second term on planning commission.
Good to meet you.
Awesome. Um, I'm Greg. I'm someone's little Greg.
Little Greg, yes.
Little Greg.
And there's a big Greg.
There's big Greg right there.
Big Greg. I have lived in Far West for ten years now, which is wild to think about. And I live in Darren's neighborhood.
When, when did you move in? What message did you move in?
What month did I move in? May of twenty fifteen.
What day?
It was like Labor Day, or not Labor Day, sorry, Memorial Day. That weekend.
On May first.
Oh, did you? Okay, all right.
We, we moved in Memorial Day two thousand two.
Did you really?
Yeah.
Yeah. Greg, this is Connor Jones, our new guy on the blog.
Nice to meet you.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Greg Baptist. Background is working for Salt County, planning development for twenty-eight years and causing trouble here. So I was gonna walk in and say, Eddie thought you got rid of me.
He's good at causing trouble though, so, yeah.
He likes to play devil's advocate.
Yes.
For the last, for the last month, I've been dealing with a hardwood floor issue.
Fun, fun.
Ice machine decided to leak behind the fridge. And we found it after it buckled.
Oh, see, we're talking replacement, not just resurfacing. Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Tongue and groove is a.
Yep.
Oh, boy.
Tear it out, bring the new wood in, let it acclimate for two weeks. Then lay it down, stain it, sand it, sand, sand, sand it, stain it, sand it again. Finish coat, buff it, finish coat, finish Wednesday. More hot water. House was inhabitable, habitable because of the smell.
Oh, yes.
I lit the pilot like tonight. My wife pulled up and says, when did you slide it? And I said, about twenty minutes ago.
You even take a hot shower a little bit.
Yeah, I've done stormwater work, uh, a lot of hillside development in the canyons. I was in charge of seven hundred square miles, including Kennecott for stormwater rules and regulations. Three ski resorts. Probably retired and I enjoyed it.
From Harriman, so.
Ah!
I watched Harriman Allsburg Down three times.
What about it?
Camp Williams.
Camp Williams and the hot muffler.
Yeah.
They're parking on the weeds. When I first started, Harriman was, we were designing subdivisions with horse truster. Those are all gone.
Pretty much.
So, yeah, no, this, I went down there through there, I went to the Real. The new Real Stadium. It's like driving downtown Chicago. Ten-story buildings on either side of you. So it was ridiculous. But, you know, it's okay. It was better than what it was gonna be, I guess. So Bluff Dell was gonna be, uh, it still might be part, well, no, because Harriman annexed all the way around to the mountain, the camp Williams. But the Bluff Dell portion was gonna be Intel and a couple of other projects, so, and Sorensen. Richard Sorensen was gonna do it, so.
Okay, Lou.
Well, I'm Lou Best. Uh, collectively, I've been in Far West for fifty years. There was the first twenty-four years that started in nineteen forty-four. And then I spent, uh, some time going to college for ten years and then was on the faculty at Iowa State University for thirty years. And then I have come back for my last twenty-four years here in Far West. I have served on the planning commission. This is my third stint on the planning commission. So I've had an opportunity to see Far West change from an unincorporated town with few roads and no semblance of a city government to one that's, I think, doing a good job of making adjustments to changes in times and government regulations, particularly from the state. And, uh, I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed working on the planning commission, trying to preserve the things that have made Far West an attractive place for people. And yet, at the same time, be realistic about the things we have to address now, that some of which we'd prefer not doing, but they are reality. So we're trying to do it as compliant as we can and yet serve the citizens as best as we can, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm Lila Earl, I'm the vice chair of the planning commission. We've been here ten years, we moved in twenty fifteen. I'm on my third term on planning commission, I, I'm on my seventh year. And, uh, I worked for LDS Church for thirty years as an engineer and retired and lived in Taylor out there and incorporated by West Haven for twenty. And our kids getting married, moved on way, we needed to downsize because we have a full acre and can only imagine what it's worth now. But we moved out here and lived out in the Far West Farm So Division, uh, just on the way to Preon Lawn. But we really enjoyed out here and, and, uh, when we moved in, the subdivision to the north of us, uh, was just being built. And now it's just a thriving metropolis and, and like Lou, we just, we just want the best for our citizens because the citizens have to know that we are also living here and we're their neighbors. And it's just not a rubber stamp deal, you know, and so we just, we do the best we can and go from there, so. Okay, with that being said, let's start it on this, uh, uh, this overlay zone. Geneva asked me to, uh, to go through Liam's comments first.
Darren, will you just throw one of those in my direction?
And so we'll just go through this and if you have any suggestions or any.
I talked ten days on this. In the housing committee, one of the things we were having issues with or.
No, 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 we're on this one first.
We're on this one.
Oh, well, I'm on this, okay, sorry.
Yeah, this is Liam's deal here.
So Liam just really had two semantic things, just get rid of all the land on that, for, on the paragraph purpose and objective. And then over in paragraph C, just, it's considered minimum requirements as applicable rather than as they apply. So, and then the, the only real change was, was rather than having the bond, or the escrow account, he changed it to improvement completion assurance. And so I've already changed this all up and sent it out, so hopefully whoever needs to move it on can do that. But, uh, in this one, it says, the plan development will be constructed to completion in accept, in an acceptable manner. The applicant shall submit an improvement completion assurance in a manner acceptable to the city as otherwise speci-, or as otherwise specified in city ordinance. The amount of the improvement completion assurance shall be determined by the city engineer as an estimated cost of required improvements, including construction and installation of all required landscaping, parking and street improvements, including paving, curb, sidewalks, water and sewer lines, public parks and playgrounds, recreation facilities and other many shown on the final development plan. The applicant shall also file a schedule of anticipated completion dates for such improvements. In the event that the improvements are not completed in reasonable conformance with said schedule, the city may undertake to complete the improvements and pay for such improvements from the improvement completion assurance.
And I am assured, I'm assuming, I like it because we were throwing around with what to include or not include. I'm assuming this improvement completion assurance is commonly used jargon. So I, I think it, and it covers whatever we want it to cover.
We can.
Well, I'm sure that's what he was aiming.
It makes us, you don't have to specify bond or escrow or whatever, it's just whatever the city tells them they're gonna do, it's what they're gonna do.
I think it's, I think it's a good choice.
It's just verbiage I'm not used to.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm asking my question, you know, but I'm assuming he's seen that.
Yeah. Like, actually, I like the idea of it because that way it opens up to, did we decide if we're gonna remove the letter of credit?
Yeah.
So that include, so this would include whatever the city says.
This bond, letter, credit, whatever.
Ball letter, credit, escrow, whatever can fit into this.
So, and, because we, our list may not have been inclusive, this thing covers anything we decide to use.
That's what I thought the bond was.
So.
It is. Wow, you're right.
And that was it. That's all the comments that Liam had, so. So I think, I think we put this one to bed. We, like I said, I've already made those changes and I emailed that out to everybody, so. Hopefully Geneva, whoever gets that.
So this will be recommended, I think, tonight?
I didn't see it on the agenda.
Oh, you're right, it's not on the agenda because we had to decide on the work session first. It'll be on the next one. Okay, on to the E A D U.
Okay, um, what I've done is I've put in brackets the unresolved stuff, okay? So I'm not gonna spend any time going back and reading. There's the first one, it says to be completed. Remember we were talking about metering for gas, electricity and water services? Here's what I suggest. Let's not put anything in there because we're not really controlling it anyway. In, in other words, I don't know, and I've asked Geneva repeatedly for months now to give me a statement, it's not come. And the more I thought about it, um, it, the different utilities might have different perspectives. Bonavista might have a different view on what to do rather than electricity or gas.
It may even change.
And it might change, and so since we're not regulating it anyway, to me, the simple thing, it, it's, and they're, they're gonna have to be compliant because utility companies aren't gonna provide the utilities unless they do what they want.
Sure.
So why do we need to include that?
The biggest thing that came out of my conversation with Nate, that he suggested we include, is that once the property becomes two units with an exterior, external accessory dwelling unit, it becomes charged at a commercial rate rather than a residential.
And I don't, I don't agree with that.
Well, that's what the utility companies are telling Nate they're gonna do.
If you have a separate line.
You can't have a separate line because what they're doing is they're gonna come off of the meter, tee off with the water.
All three, all three of the utility companies are gonna do that?
Well, Bonavista and the sewer company. So they're gonna come off the line, the main line, tee off and go back because they don't want them in the street, but they are gonna charge them a commercial rate.
But that's between them and the utilities, not us.
Well.
And, and so what would we state here?
Nate suggested that we somehow stated in here that, that they will be charged an additional, uh, commercial rate rather than a residential.
See, I don't like that because we're saying that we're, we're getting into the rates the utilities will charge. And that's not, that's not our purview.
I don't disagree with you. It was his suggestion.
No, I understand that, but that's gonna be a shot, a sticker shot for some people.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking that'll change once the state gets involved and says, these are now allowable, utility companies, you've got to.
I'm, I'm guessing the state will stomp on that one. It's, it's, flies in the face of trying to make it affordable.
But don't, don't, if they're building an ex- external dwelling unit, don't they have to get a will serve letter anyway? They come to us for, for approval as part of the site plan. So I would think that the will serve would, I would hope that the will serve would indicate that information on that letter so they will know ahead of time what they're up against. But I don't know.
What I want to do, just to be informative to the person making that application for the E A D U, is to indicate maybe that metering for electric, gas and water or utilities, if you want to leave those individuals out, just make utilities, will be assessed at the utilities discretion or, you just note, if you note in there that, that they're gonna have to get that through the utility, not through the city. And we don't have to identify what that utility rates can be, the utility law.
Yeah, but, but when they get the will serve, when they go to the will serve, I would hope the utility would tell them how they're gonna charge them.
Yeah, they should.
And so.
Okay, how about this? Metering of utilities will be determined at the discretion, no, metering will be determined at the discretion of the utilities.
Of the utility companies?
The utility companies.
I like that.
Huh?
I, I agree with that, at least tell us the land.
And then we're not.
It takes a lot of us.
Well, and it also, we're not trying to look in a crystal ball and figure out what it's gonna be. That was my problem.
Are we requiring them to be separately metered?
It's up to the utilities. It'll be up to the utilities.
It's not our problem and, and my, I don't like putting it here and then having to change it because the state changes it or one utility does it one way and another utility does it.
Because if it were me, I would just, I would tie everything right back into the main house and not worry about anything. The metering had come off the, the main meter of the house.
If utility allows that.
It would just, it would just be, it would just be tied off of what I already have. It wouldn't be a separate line.
The thing that Greg pointed out from what Nate said is that when they do that, it'll be commercial rated. But that's not something that we can.
It's not our problem.
Not our problem, exactly.
And the thing is, once they find out it's a commercial rate, they discourage quite a few.
So what about this? Metering for electricity, gas and water services will be determined at the discretion of utility companies.
Yeah, that's the word.
That's about all you can do right now.
And that's just, and what that does, it accomplishes yours, it's, there's a flag up there, you better find out, well, how, what the game's.
We, we say we want it.
Yeah, so, and that's really our responsibility.
Can I make a suggestion to your thing? Take out electric, gas and water, is this what utilities?
Okay, I did that. It's eldest repeat utilities twice, which is fine. Metering of utilities will be determined at the discretion of the utility companies. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Metering of the utilities will be determined at the discretion of the utility companies.
Exactly.
Okay, that's, that's our statement.
I'm sure at some point, if the state allows this, they're gonna come up with the set of rules.
The state can go after the utility companies and not us.
Well, but that's not, we, we're not determining, what this, what this is saying is you've got to check with the utility companies and comply and we're not, and, and we're not the ones making the rules, okay? That's what we're telling them.
I called Nate Monday and he called me back Tuesday after he talked.
Okay, so that's, we'll put that in. That's good. And that, I think, okay. The next one, uh, if you go about two thirds of the way down, it says to be resolved, uh, really nothing there. Here's my suggestion. The E A C U shall share the same address with the primary residence with an A and B designation. And I chose A and B rather than one and two because one and two is confusing because you're just adding one more number on the ad, already numerical address, which could get very crazy.
The question I have is, is you check with the, with the U S Postal Service?
I, they don't care. They don't care about A and B. And the fire department says, we don't, I've talked to them. No, they said, they said, if you call us, you're probably gonna give us very specific information about where the fire is. That was their answer.
There'll be somebody on the road.
So this right here, the fact we're leaving it the same primary number and just put an A and B, I think we've solved the problem.
Play the position of Greg here. That's devil's advocate.
Little Greg, play Greg, look big Greg.
Why do we, why do we care again? Just tell me, why do we even care what the address is?
We let the homeowner figure it out.
Yeah.
Go in the same mailbox.
They even need a separate address, yeah, it's like. No, the post office is gonna deliver.
I don't, I, I don't, I'm not wedded to this. This was presented.
Some people might care though, you know, if it's a renter, they might say, hey, you know, where do I get my.
What's the harm done in having an A and B?
I don't, I don't think there's any harm. Oh, but you look at like some of these office buildings, like these little strip malls, they've got suite A, suite B, you know. It's, they got one address on the main building, but then it's A, B and C.
It, it kind of, I'm kind of inclined to, to have some kind of a separate address because you're now talking about a dwelling unit, you're talking about two houses, not one.
But it's not one piece of property.
But you know what?
But for the, from the practical point of view of somebody looking for something, they don't care who owns the land, they care, is there a numerical address that I can find where I'm going to?
If I was a, if I was a homeowner.
Somebody can't find where they're going. Should the city care?
We, I wanna put this to bed tonight, so what's your preference? I don't, I'm ambivalent on this.
To answer your question, the concern that I see with giving each unit a, a, a number of address, it now looks like they're individual lots.
The post office is only gonna deliver to the specific street address. They're not gonna deliver separately to an A or B.
And, and quite frankly, the fire department didn't care.
Right, the fire department didn't care.
Which is, which was a safety issue, which was a safety issue we were talking about.
I would say we should talk to the city engineer because he's familiar with all the rules and regulations.
I'll see him tomorrow.
But he's familiar with all the rules and regulations for what the post office requires, what the fire department requires.
You're not really, you're not excited about it, you're not real hot on it.
To me, it doesn't matter because, because the only reason you have an address is so the post office can deliver your day mail, so.
I've got one comment about this. Okay, I've got one comment about this, okay? If I had my mailbox out on the street and I had an apartment, you know, I built a house or ADU behind me, I would put, I would mark mine, this is just me, I'd put up a separate mailbox and put, you know, twenty-two, uh, A and twenty-two B. So when the letters would come, it'd come to, to, you know, they'd put it in each mailbox. But the more I've been thinking about it, a lot of these mailboxes, any subdivisions, mine, I have a mailbox. But there's a central box now that's out on the corner. And so that won't, that won't fly, so.
The, the reality is, if you have an accessory dwelling unit, you're gonna have to pull the mail out of the mailbox and separate it. That is, that, but I don't think people, that's gonna be a deterrent.
No, and it's a small price to pay.
Well, it's, it's ridiculously small.
Yeah.
You see, my daughter, she lived in K Zell on the main street in Rinalhouse, and there was a gal in the basement. And when they got the mail, they went to one mailbox and whoever got the mail first took it and put it in their doorstep. So that's exactly what we're gonna have to do.
And it's not like they don't know the people in the.
No.
Unit because they're renters. Now, you were gonna check with the engineer. If you don't get back to me with something that the engineer is pretty much insisting on, I'm gonna assume we're gonna X this, okay? Is that it? Is that, are we in agreement on that?
I will.
Okay, so that's pending. Okay, we go on the back side. This is one. It's a matter of it wasn't complete and we can make it, et cetera, is kind of a corny way of ending requirements, you know? The application shall contain, a completed application form, the floor plan, the plan for off-street parking. We could simply put those three and leave it as that. The reason why I put et cetera is I thought you might come up with something else. But et cetera doesn't make sense to be there. I mean, it's, it, the idea was, let's make the list and put a period after.
What about drainage out of the house?
That's probably, everybody.
No, that's a building, sorry, as I interject, that's a building code thing.
It is a building code thing.
Yeah, not in our ordinance, we don't put that in our ordinance. As we don't.
We're putting in a floor plan, that's a building.
We said floor plan, we said.
Parking, that's, that's still another thing.
Yeah, but we, we don't even do that. That's not something we even look at. That's an engineering and a building code thing only. We don't look at drainage plans. We don't, we don't interpret them, we don't look at them, we don't have comments on them, we don't.
That brings up an interesting thing. Does this even, are these even reviewed by the city engineer?
They should. Well, they're reviewed by building permit, which would be code. I don't know where the.
No, no, because I don't see the tin, in city engineer even in this loop.
No, he probably isn't, but the drainage plan is engineer or Nate, one of the building officials. But no, the, the drainage plan is not something we look at.
Well, that'd be the same with the floor plan.
The engineer doesn't look at the building permit.
You could do exterior instead of floor plans.
Yeah, you could do it.
They could have one big huge room with a, with a toilet in the corner.
Don't we care somewhat about the floor plan because member, well, I guess that doesn't matter, it's because you have the square footage. Okay.
Have the square footage is the minimum.
Okay, here, I'm going back to.
Down, right out of the gate.
Just keeping you in line. I know, just keeping you in line.
We, what we have, what we say in this about drainage is this, and it's back on the front page.
I guess you could make a comment that it cannot affect any of the current drainage, just wanted to see something happen.
I think it's a useful thing to put here just to tell them, you've gotta be thinking about this. Whether we review it or not, it's still, we, we, you know, we tell them that they have to have parking on hard surface. We already said that.
The state code states very clearly that you cannot direct more water onto the adjoining property than what was there prior to.
Okay, do we require that for a regular accessory, you, dwelling, accessory building?
Probably not.
Well, then why?
We don't require a drainage plan for a home either.
No, but I'm saying.
A single family home doesn't have a drainage plan.
If we're not, if, if somebody can put up an enormous.
Right, right.
Three thousand.
But, but the subdivision has an overall drainage plan, but each individual home does not have a drainage plan.
Okay.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. In, in current stats, we don't, we don't have a drainage plan for the home.
So just be careful what you say. No, our home, no.
Well, I'm, I'm saying we, we, car wax city, it's not.
The fact that for other accessory buildings, we don't say anything about drainage. And those buildings are a lot bigger probably in many cases than this. I don't think we should, so my question is, can, can we just make that our three in our list? I'm not gonna leave, I'm not gonna leave it with et cetera on the back page.
I would give her a floor plan and put exterior elevation.
I agree.
Exterior is that one elevation or we want four elevations? It should be exterior elevations with an S.
Elevations.
How many stories it is?
Potato, potato.
Why, because if you say elevation, I'm giving you only the front elevation probably. If you say elevations, I'm, and I'm giving you more than one.
Give an idea of the side and the back is gonna look like.
But not really, because remember the ones we've had previously where we've seen a front elevation and then they do metal on the side?
Well, if you're looking exterior finishes, that's building code.
Okay, but we've already told them in this previous thing that we set a maximum height and we say it can't exceed the house height, so what is this accomplishing?
What does it look like?
Actually, why do we even need elevations? Because we're never gonna, we're never even gonna, I mean, in a single family home, you're, you don't look at elevations because we can't predict, we, we can't tell them what, how to design their home.
No, so you'll come down on us like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where are they going to record the total square footage, because we can't go beyond what was it?
The floor plan, total size.
Yeah, so a floor plan would be good if we left the floor plan in there.
I, I still think we ought to keep the floor plan in, because I would like to have a notion what the thing looks like.
Well, we asked that for accessory dwellings.
So.
Or, yeah, accessory, like a shop, like a.
Okay, so.
That's a bad guy, she slammed me already.
No, but the.
Will you go back to my car?
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not reinforcing her slam, but I am saying the fact that we don't, the fact that we don't make that statement in the accessory building portion is, is my argument for not including it here, because this is likely a smaller structure.
I would agree, well, it's limited on square footage, anyway.
So, can we just end it with period and get rid of et cetera? And just simply say completed application form, the floor plan, and the plan for off-street parking?
Yep, you don't have et cetera there.
I'm still with elevations though, and accessory dwelling, we asked.
Elevation to it.
Well, I, I don't care about, if you want.
No elevations in there, because it'd be interesting to see what it looks like.
No, just floor plan, elevation, just give me the exact words.
Floor plans and ele, exterior elevations.
Floor plan and?
Exterior elevations.
Or put it parentheses in there on the S.
I guess it could just be one until they put metal crap on the side.
Okay. If somebody puts a thousand-square-foot apartment in the corner of their accessory building outside.
Well, they had to submit.
They had to submit an elevation of their access, of their building.
Yes, they do.
I know, but say they've had their building for 10 years and they want to throw, they want to throw an apartment in the back corner of it.
Usually, would they come back to us, would that be, um, something they'd come back to us?
It would be considered a remodel.
They would just, they would just go to Nate. Oh, yeah, but if they did, if you already had the structure, and you wanted to put in a dwelling unit in there, you'd probably just submit to Nate.
And that's a building permit issue.
Because you're not building, but you're not building a whole new structure anyway.
No, I understand you wouldn't need elevations in that case, you'd just need floor plan.
Well, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't even come see us, because it's an existing structure. It would go, Nate is a remodel, it would be a remodel.
It'd be a remodel.
So, here's the way it's going to read. The application for EADU shall contain completed application form, comma, the floor planned and exterior elevations, and the plan for off-street parking, period.
I like that.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you guys botch anything else in this?
Okay, one thing.
While you were gone, we changed the law.
Actually, I'm going to, I got a retort for that, we didn't because you weren't here.
Thank you.
One thing in our meeting, we need to talk to Matt about, we got a development meeting in the morning.
Yeah.
We got to talk to Matt about A or B, see if there's a code or log or something, because he would know that.
You'll remember that.
I wrote it down.
Okay.
This last one was a very good question. This last one's a very good question.
Okay, the last one, we threw this around and never got anywhere with it, as far as a definitive choice. So, what do you want to do with it?
The one.
The last one, to be resolved.
Oh, to be, okay. Where'd you get the violations of this ordinance may result in penalties, fines, and as outlined by the law?
I got that from our own verbiage in our accessory dwelling unit portion, so.
I'm sure that logs.
Not clear for city.
If, if, if that one's obsolete, so is this, I don't know about the number, but I figured Liam, when he looks at it, will.
Yeah.
Good.
Um, this is, I feel like this was only a sour point for me, everyone else didn't care about the last item.
I actually probably am the opposite end of the spectrum, I, I, I have no problem with persons doing that.
I didn't, so to give you some context, this is, we're talking about accessory dwelling units, which would be in an accessory dwelling. No, an accessory dwelling.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Would be in an external one, but you, yeah, or. Or, yeah, or some sort of structures that, that's not open to the house. We currently now allow internal accessory, internal dwelling units, which would be, yeah, basement, yeah, something. The question is, are we okay with someone allowed to have both?
I think we argued this earlier, didn't we? And I was, I was saying it doesn't matter, because I would love, if I wanted to do one outside and I use my basement as an apartment as well.
My thought, my thought legally is, we probably, even if we said no, we probably aren't going to have say in it at some point.
At some point, we probably will from the state of conduct.
I, I, I've got a feeling that if we were preventing it, that sometime the state would slap our hands and tell us we couldn't.
My hesitation is, I don't want to move into a single-family residence and have my neighbor rent out their basement and they build a shop that has a rental, because that's not why I personally moved to Far West on a larger lot with single-family homes.
But what if your neighbor builds a 3,000-square-foot accessory building?
Once, we agreed, what?
What if your neighbor builds a 3,000-square-foot accessory building within five feet of your property?
I'm great with that, they can build whatever they want.
That doesn't bother you, but them having another family in their house does?
Having three families next door to you when it should be one, yes.
Who said it should be?
It, I'm in a single-family residential zone.
Well, already we're saying that it can be two families.
Right, which we don't have any, hold on, go back though, if this wasn't mandated by the state, would we be doing this?
No.
No, we wouldn't be, so my thought is, the purpose that I moved in, yeah.
I think parking requirements alone, probably could be 99.9%.
And you're.
That was the substantive issue, I thought, it's not whether I'd like them to be in the house or not, but parking.
Again, and again, size is going to be restrictive of the lot and how your lot's configured too. I personally, at my house, have plenty of parking for internal and external.
But then you got to share a single mailbox for three people, so they have, that's the problem with the, I'm just kidding, I know.
When they are collecting this, I don't think that inconvenience is going to bother them.
My thing is that you could potentially have one home that has moved in as a young family with a intent of living in a single-family residential neighborhood, and you could potentially have six families around them.
Well, we, this is already allowed, because I can show you a house off Far West Drive.
Doesn't mean it's allowed.
Yeah, it is, it exists in Far West already. There is a, there's a house off Far West Drive that has about 50 cars parked in it. I've never counted the number of people living there, but it's got to be.
They're renting both things?
No, they're not renting it.
I'm not worried about, it's not necessarily a car thing for me.
Maybe it's used car lot.
It's that the intent, yeah, if you get next to a lot that, you know, yes, you have someone that has 10 kids, you know, that's nature. But the other part of it is not the intent to potentially have every person in my, my neighborhood have two families, three families living on one lot, I, I have a hard time swallowing that.
Okay.
But I, I may just lose this battle.
You probably will, let me tell you this, let me get, let me give you, let me give you a good reason. So, I'm, I'm on a, on an acre lot, I like this idea. You're in a neighborhood that has high density, where you have four houses on the same piece of parcel that I do. You have no objection to four, no, four, with, with high, with high density.
Oh.
With high density, you're, no, but I'm talking about the real, not, no. So you've got four people, four legitimate single-family dwellings in that one acre. I decide I want to have an internal and an external on my one acre. I still have fewer people in that neighborhood than what we are already allowing on high density.
So my question would be, do you just say?
Property zone.
A one, and our 115.
So do you, hold on, go this way. Blue, go this way, could you say that, could you say that you're allowed to have it if you're on a half acre or more?
There you go.
Well.
Point four two acres.
Doesn't.
Point four two, okay, sorry, if you're on a, I hate to say a third acre, but, yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't though that, even if you, whether it be an external building or a shop or something like that, you still can't occupy, a building cannot be on more, it has to, you have to have a certain percentage of remaining space.
Yeah.
And so, in your case with like a full acre.
Probably have to.
You have that percentage is available.
No, no, but, I, no, I could have an internal one in my three-story house, and I could also have an external one.
The percentage of lots, you know, the size, because you know, if you build a building, you have to have a certain.
Because the high density doesn't have, isn't going to be able to have an accessory.
Well, I'm, I'm just talking about humanity and you're, you're in a confined space.
I'm not going to win that, I'm not going to win it, I just don't.
Well, let's just, should we vote?
I think you should. I think.
Okay, that's.
I made that suggestion.
Oh, I'm, 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 my suggestion is we do this, which happens to be a delete symbol.
I'd say we wind through it.
I say we wind through it too and just leave it out.
Leave it out, and then.
Just not worry about it.
Then we'll know that Darren's.
We're not saying yes or no, and the state will probably eventually sell, say yes.
Sure, and then you can subdivide.
So that's deleted.
And if somebody comes to us with this deal, we'll approach that.
Then we have to decide.
You will get the information from.
I got it right here.
From Intucraft, I'll probably move before I do that.
Okay, we had a joint, we had a joint meeting on this already with the city council, right?
Yeah, so.
So put this on our agenda for action next time.
Yes, and I'm going to put the other one, are we, are we content with this? Okay.
Yeah, this one's good.
I said it changes that the other day, so.
We're going to put both of these on the next agenda.
Oh, yeah.
And I think we have to public carry for both of them, and then we'll vote on them and they'll go to city council. This also, so this, um, and I didn't quite read through it yet, but this triggered with Liam, we need to update our code on surety bonds and escrows and all that stuff, so he is writing up an update to that, and then that will, so both of them will match.
And so they'll, so he'll have it.
That was my question. Yeah.
Old side with both.
So he'll have it done in time with the public carry.
It's not part of this.
Oh, it's not, I know.
This will be its own code.
Can he, can he put, can he put that also in the definition section?
I don't think we even, I don't even think we see it, do we? We shouldn't even see that.
I'm not sure how it'll go.
About the agreement, that should be.
No, it's not, it's, it's just a code, it's a code, so it's updating our code to be correct with the surety bonds and escrows.
No, but I'm saying, let's put that in the definition section.
Yeah, I can have it go here at all. Um, okay, so that's what's looking forward. As far as projects that we have like coming up, we have some items, the general plan updates is becoming a more urgent thing as we get to summer. But, um, Amy, when we looked at the concept over on, is it 4,000 West?
Park, pardon.
Work, West by Smith and, across the street from Smith and Edwards by the park.
It's around 4,000 North.
4,000 North.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that little commercial pad, she has, when she sat down with us and went over what our thoughts were on it, she has created a development agreement that Liam, our attorney, has gone through and edited. She is planning on probably being on our work session next, uh, two weeks from now, to go through the development agreement. I am planning on having, so Liam gave a really good five, 10-minute lecture, uh, informational session about development agreements to the city council a couple months ago when we were going through all the West Creek stuff. I'm going to have Liam come and give us that, so that, I, I feel like we're throwing development agreements at you, at you guys, and we haven't done a lot of development agreements, and I think there's a lot of confusion on where our, our spot lays and where the rest is up to city council or Liam or et cetera. So I want him to come in and give us kind of what we need to look at the agreement, and then the rest is on city council, because we have potentially another development agreement coming our way for some of the stuff that we may resume tonight. So there's just, they're going to be back to back, and I just don't want to go into the other one blindly like we did in somewhat on Legends.
Can we count Liam's training when he comes as training hours?
So that'll be probably in the next, that, will that be in the next work session?
That'll be hopefully the next work session, yeah, so I'll put that together, um.
Now, what, what comes on the next work session besides, I guess Liam will probably take up the whole time.
Yeah, we won't have anything else on the work session. So I'm going to let, I'm going to delegate the update of the general plan to Lyle, and he's going to figure out how we're going to tackle that. And it might just be sections handed out, that's probably going to have to be with everything that's going on between that piece out there and what's coming at the C3 and some of the business items that are now starting to line up. Legends is coming, hopefully coming in for their final approval on next meeting, as well as some condo associations and some things like that with some commercial. We have a lot lining up, so that may be outside work essentially, so.
Could, could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Before we get into the nuts and bolts of the general plan and a lot of it's bookkeeping and that.
I'm just going to delegate it to you.
That's why I'm making this suggestion. No, I, I think it would be useful to have a meeting, joint meeting with the city council and find out if they've got any heartburns over any part, I'm not talking about minutia, I'm talking about, okay, in general, is there something with one of the maps or the, our philosophy about zoning or future land use? The, the future land use map will take more thinking, collective thinking than anything, you know?
Maybe that's the target, maybe we start with in May or first part of June, get a joint work session together.
Okay.
One of our meetings, one of our meet, is it the end of May, we have an open house or something during one of our meetings?
Yeah, it's, it's an open house, but, but I remember the city council, they said that it can move that to a different date. It, oh, you know, held it the same night, but it'll be over in the senior citizens.
If we need to.
And, and we're nowhere, we'd be nowhere near prepared.
Probably is issue first of June, then, okay.
Push it off till October, November.
No, but, but what I'm.
No.
What, what I'm saying though, is the general plan is, is, is philosophy and, and vision for the city and so forth.
I agree.
And I think, uh, if, also it'd be useful to maybe force some of the city council members into taking a peek into the general plan. Because we, we, pardon, particularly the, particularly the future land use map and the layout of, of the transportation, the transportation and land use maps, if nothing else, I don't think all the descriptive stuff is what we should be, I mean, we need to look at that again, but. Remember Ted went through and we, we really.
Went through it piece by piece together.
And I don't see that happening, I think we need to worry about obsolescence.
Yeah.
And updating the land use map and the transportation map ought to be our big priorities.
Two of you can kind of put together an agenda of what you'd like to talk about with the city council that's most important, as far as maps or things that they should be aware of or have in, in, input in.
But when we went through it with Ted, wasn't we like two years late or something?
We were late, we were, it was weird.
It was way over.
I think a zillion years late, yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm glad he did it, but we went through a, a serious editorial purge, and I'm not.
That's why I feel like this time's not going to be that bad.
This time, I don't see any perking this time, I see making sure it's current, and, and it reflects, it does, there's, for instance, I personally would like to think of, you know, we have on 2,000 West, we have, right now it's listed in future land use as residential or commercial. Personally, I think of commercial in a different light, if you're going between 1,800 North and 2,700 North than I do on the tail ends.
27 to 4,000.
Yes, in other words, I, I'm not, I wouldn't be really excited about a flex building between 1,800 North and 2,000 West. But right now, there's, I, I think we could say, okay, maybe our approach, what we would consider acceptable commercial in our vision, might be different in our main center part of the city than it is on the, on the ends. That's an example.
Retail commercial.
Yeah, that, that's, that's something, for instance, we could look at, so, and there's, I'm sure.
Close commercial, bottom residential.
And then that's where we could bring in that too, you know, so.
Because our ends are industrial, up north of 2,700, and then down by Cow Ranch and stuff with transport and stuff.
No, but, but you understand what I'm saying, so.
So in that middle portion, we need to preserve that as.
Right.
The hard part is that's the worst portion for retail commercial.
It is.
Well.
No, that would be your.
But it, it's a matter of kind of preserving it for the people that live there and they don't want wall buildings.
Oh, yeah, but maybe the street isn't crossable, it's a 55 mile per hour street, like it's not a very conducive retail commercial area, which sucks.
But I would like to hear.
Damn, like they did on 2,700, so.
They brought down 2,700, I still rally through it.
But what I think would be useful.
We saw you.
We know.
We saw, we saw you on your phone going through the school zone.
Yeah, I didn't get a ticket on my phone.
She got a ticket for being on her phone.
Oh my gosh.
I wasn't on it, I was on a Zoom call, okay?
It was funny, I looked at that.
So what I'm suggesting is.
Just so planning.
Right, and so we, we, we get the city council thinking about it too, okay, review that, those portions at least, not the descriptive stuff. And because I'd rather do it now rather than have us invest a lot of time only to have maybe in particular one member of the city council, um, and I'm not looking at you as the one member, but I think you know what I'm talking about, uh, come up and kind of nitpick it to death because they haven't had a chance to give input, which I think they should. Let's get their input at first, and then let's work on it. That's not volunteering, that's making a suggestion.
I feel like you guys are.
There is, there is a difference.
There is a thing called ball and pole too.
That'd be like the old guys in the Muppet Show.
That might actually be a very nice team with Connor as well because you're very unfamiliar with the general plan.
That's a good idea.
So if you have time to help them, that would be a good, really, that's how I live.
But you understand, what, what, the flex space we got on the south side of 4W is fine, but I wouldn't want it right here in the middle.
I want it on the east.
Well, but I mean.
I mean, it's the, I'm talking about the mixed use.
No, but I mean, it's that kind of discussion we need to have, because that's what a general plan is, is for developer, is here's our vision for our city, and understand you've gotta comply with our vision, or convince us otherwise.
Worst thing I look at.
Yeah.
Well, my wife's from Plain City, so we can always like deserve it. Yeah, I mean, I've been in Weaver County for six, seven years.
Will someone send me one draft on that?
Parts of Ogden and then.
Lou was gonna make some corrections on that.
I gotta talk to Matt tomorrow about this.
Did you hear that Lou? Geneva, once you make your updates to this.
Oh yeah, I can do it, but I'll, it's pending his, once he tells me, we've made, the rest of us decided, so.
I will call you tomorrow.
I'll make sure, I just need to make sure something's in. We're gonna have a long agenda on the, couple of public hearings, Legends, the 2000 West warehousing, people who wanna come in and do condos.
Recalling with this too.
And then.
That way he'll work it out.
Get in with this on what he.
Just, as we're discussing, going through, didn't even thought it'd be a good idea to bring him in on the mix, just, just to be able to listen for you and I.
I think the first thing though is to decide exactly.
Thank you. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We are going to have the pledge of allegiance led by Connor and then a prayer by Lyle. You will all stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're coming for this time as we begin this city meeting, and please help us as we are going through this process that we might be able to make those decisions which are important to the city and for the residents that live here. We're grateful for all the many blessings, and please watch over our families while we are away, and we say the same things as Christ to them.
Thank you, okay. First, uh, is public comment, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment? If there are none, um, next is report from city council.
There've been two meetings we've had since yours. We met on the 3rd of April and the 17th last week. Um, neither time did we have any public comments, so we were kind of like we are tonight. Uh, we've received a report both from Lyle and Geneva on, uh, the planning commission's progress, so we're up to date on that. There were several business licenses we approved, most of them was last week. I'll read through those in case you have any interest in checking any of these out. We gave the approval for Canyon Controls and Systems, Opal and Light Studios, Chapman's Healing Solutions, Fit Pro Fitness, Patriot HVAC, STS Manufacturing, and Blue Rock Enterprises. Uh, they were all, um, fit in with the ordinances and had their approvals from the fire department and engineers, so. Um, those were the business licenses approved. The council approved the use of, um, we have a certain amount of ramp funding that, that we use for Freedom Festival, so we just reapproved that for that use again this coming year. Um, we discussed and approved recommendation of Connor as the alternate member of the planning commission. We welcome you and, uh, we're kind of excited to see some new blood here to help us out. We, the council then set a date of May 22nd for an open house and public hearing to get input for our proposed transportation utility fee plans.
When was that again, May 22nd?
May 22nd? What?
Or what day was that?
Um, I don't know.
Oh, I thought you said it.
It's a Thursday.
Yes, I think it's May 22nd.
Yeah, it was a Thursday.
Thursday, May 22nd, oh.
Um, there was minimal reports on assignments, nothing significant that the planning commission is, uh, should be aware of. However, we did adjourn last week and went into a closed, uh, CRA meeting where we discussed, um, the continuing saga of development east of the freeway off 2700 North, um, which part of that you'll be dealing with tonight. I believe that was it, we, last week we adjourned late at 8:30, but, uh, I think that's it. Any questions?
No, thank you. Okay, moving on next to our first business item, consider recommendation to the city council approval or denial of the rezone request, um, sorry, request for a rezone for the Far West landing properties from C2, M1, and A1 to C3, 2700 North Regional Commercial Zone, including the following parcels. I think there was some miscommunication, the applicant is not going to be here. I know we have already had the public hearing, um, and discussion, but I will leave it up to the planning commission to set, to decide if you have questions for the applicant, if you want things like that.
We talked about this for a long time, that we, all those parcels are different zones, and we just are trying to get it to the C3 zone.
Yeah.
All of this.
I think very strong support for the concept plan. And, uh, this seemed to be the least encumbered pathway to get there.
Yeah, and it'll all be combined to one, I mean, one zone.
Right.
Not portions, so yeah.
For your benefit, that's what the city council and mayor in particular has been pushing them to apply for upfront.
Yeah.
Before we really go into.
My only, um, I know one of the asks too was that this re, rezone be conditional on their subdivision and things like that. I know that there was some talk, if I'm understanding the mayor correctly, that if they don't end up hitting their deadlines and get what they ultimately want approved, that the rezone does not go in place, it stays. So I don't know if we wanna do a motion to something that the rezone is contingent upon recording the final subdivision flat or something, something to that degree so that if they don't pursue it, it doesn't just, uh, or you just.
I would suggest, because we don't know what all the ins and outs are, that the mayor and the city council have been working with these people with, that they put that condition on them.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
So with that being said.
We're not holding it up.
I would like to recommend approval of the request for the rezone to, from a C2, M1 to an A, from an A1 to a C3, 2700 Regional Commercial Zone.
I'll second.
Motion by Greg, second by Lyle, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes to city council next week. Um, okay, next consent items, approval of minutes dated February 13th, 2025.
I move that we approve the minutes for February 13th.
Second.
Uh, motion by Darren, second by Greg, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, report on assignments, Greg?
None at this time.
Great, Lyle?
You better skip me.
Lou? Darren?
Just updated with Liam's changes into the PDO lay, should be good to go.
Thank you for doing that, Greg? Connor, welcome. Um, okay, Lyle?
Okay, you wanna put that up real quick? I got a picture to show you guys, it's in right there.
Oh!
Okay.
Good job.
Woo!
That is the finished dock, and then there's a bit, the other one's, the other one's a video, it's kind of a.
Almost finished dock. You might, might get wet walking that dock.
Aww.
That's, that was, we got a text message from Dave Bunderson this afternoon that it is completed, they've started, they've been working on that thing since Monday.
It's completed like the top sun and everything?
Just, just this, just the structure.
Structure.
They still got. Right, well, but it, but if you look in the corners, you got the splice plates and, and the railings are on there now, on the, the picture shows the railings. But basically it's there, it's gotta be bolted down, I mean, there's other things that has to be done. Uh, but essentially this has been, so for Connor's, uh, information, we've been, this part of the Parks Committee has been working on this thing since 2023. We started getting, uh, uh, pricing and things like that in '22, so this is a, this is a huge step, all things considered.
Will all this be cement, like how will the wheelchair get on?
What's it, what's gonna happen?
Is it gonna be built up?
You see those, you see those, uh, those bolts hanging out?
Yeah.
Those are Nelson studs, what they're gonna do, once they get it all done, they're gonna pour another slab of concrete, and it's gonna be even with this dock, or with the edge, once they, because they gotta even get the decking on.
Oh.
And then it'll be level, right, and so they're bolting it down to this, they poured the concrete two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And so what they're gonna do is, once they, uh, uh, get everything done, then they'll pour another slab, they'll form it up, pour another slab, those Nelson studs will hold, so it'll keep it from going either direction. It keeps it horizontally and vertically, yeah. And so then, uh, of course, LaRose Paving has donated their timber materials, and we're gonna have a asphalt path going from there, they're doing it. I find it ironic that, that Peter, that, uh, LaRose, it's a small asphalt company, is donating everything, you know, how they're investing in the community, and we couldn't even get a dime out of Peterson. So that's just my plug there, anyway, so once it's done, but right now I'm working with Home Depot, I, I sent an email, I ran into a, long story short, I met somebody at the Centerville Home Depot while I was getting pricing, she works at the pro desk, and we started talking what we were doing, and we ended up, uh, she encouraged me to send an application in Home Depot to see if they'll donate the supplies. They're always heavy in, in VA support, and we've got a VA hospital here in our area, and all, everything like that. And so I wrote up, I, I wrote up a proposal, did everything, sent it in, and that's been floating around their system for six months, five, since December. So two weeks ago I'd finally had it, and so I drove to Centerville and went in there to catch her, and she was on vacation, as well as the main guy that said he was gonna call me in two weeks, which he didn't. But I talked to a new manager there, and he said that he's, that it is still floating around there, they're still looking into it. But right now, we're, sorry, where we're at is, um, for the dock, we have secured, because we had to get additional funding because of the issue with Peterson. And so we did get, have secured the funding from the DWR for $27,800. That will pay off the, uh, the structure with Garrett, with the company that fabricated it. And then also, uh, I submitted a mini grant on March 14th for $23,500, and it's just waiting to go to the review committee. Now, we know that's gonna go through simply because they wanna see this project finished, and right now I'm working on getting the reimbursement sent into them. And also, uh, just so Connor understands, I'm, several of us are on. And also, uh, just so Connor understands, I'm, several of us are on different committees throughout the city and I happen to be on the Parks Committee. And it consists of Public Works, the mayor, and Katie Williams, whatever, city council. And so we meet every other week and work on projects and stuff. Um, at any rate, the Meadows Park is progressing. The Meadows Park is gonna be the new empty lot across the street from Walquist, that big open field. Katie Williams has secured three hundred thousand dollars through RAMP, so that money, we got that money secured. We requested three twenty-five and we got three hundred. It was the biggest award that we got, that RAMP awarded this year. And, uh, I submitted a CPR grant on the fourteenth of March for nine hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five because it had to be under two hundred thousand dollars. And we're still waiting on that because it's part of the U- Utah Outdoor Recreation Program. Just so you know, it's just for useless information, it's a four million dollar project. We're gonna split it up in three phases. First phase is gonna be one point three million. It'll cover the installation utilities, restrooms with the storage and a trail around the parcel. Uh, Tim and the mayor had gone over, met with the homeowners on the north side and secured the easement, so we bring the utilities in. Uh, let's see here. And last but not least, the fishing club begins this Saturday. And there was a computer glitch. And none of us are happy, but we have to still just do it. Uh, we had seventeen kids signed up and everything like that, and then we started getting people asking questions through text messages. Jason's my techy guy that sends messages out. He says, I'm getting these weird messages, so I got a copy of the receipt from one of them, went to Mick, kind of find out there was another registration program running concurrently that we did not know about and Mick couldn't see.
Oh, no.
So that number jumped from seventeen students to thirty-four.
Oh, boy.
So needless to say, I went to home, Smith and Edward yesterday, because we give them tackle boxes and stringers and stuff. We cleaned out, my wife and I cleaned out their entire stock of tackle boxes and all of their stringers, and I'm still short. I'm going to the DWR in the morning to pick out more mini tackle box anyway. And, and blessed her heart, Lindsay hopped on the computer and ordered us hats because we need more hats. And we're, we've got an increase in our budget through, for the club, and so we're gonna, uh, also provide T-shirts for the kids. And so, because we thought, well, great, we've got this extra money. Well, now we're gonna go over budget because we've already committed T-shirts. So anyway, Carson, do you fish? What are you doing Saturday morning from nine to ten thirty? Eight thirty to ten thirty.
Has Lindsay gotten you hooked up on the email yet? Okay, I'll work with her tomorrow.
I'll talk to you after. But we just, if we're looking for volunteers, I send it out to the planning and city council because.
Thirty-four kids is a lot of kids.
Well, we've done, we've had thirty before and we've done that a couple times. We decided it was way too many. That's why we bought the chairs and tables, so we cut it down. This was not planned. It was a complete surprise and I, anyway.
And this is no duplicate, this is just.
This thirty-four total because.
We actually have names, so we know they're.
Because Mick gave me the, the, the registration form so I could send it to Jason and we could get everything sorted out and I could make the attendance roll. And then Jason started getting, when he put out the, the amount for T-shirt sizes, one parent said, hey, and my daughter needs this size and she wasn't on the list. So we got a copy of that receipt, sent it to Mick. I came in here on Monday, no Tuesday, and, no, Monday, and Mick saw me pull up and he came over here and he goes, sit down. And he had me another sheet with seventeen more students.
So, or you need, which are short, you need.
We're fine right now, okay? Um, right now, because the first class, as we, we teach them how to tie knots and how to cast and how to tie knots on a hook. We start with an eyeball with parachute cord and then move out, move down to fishing line. So that'll give me enough time. Hopefully, Smith and Edward will have their tackle boxes and stuff, and I'll clean them out again. So we're, because we teach a concept every week for three weeks and the last week else they do is fish. So if we can get through the two, if we can get some volunteers for the first two weeks to help the parents, because by then the parents have gotten, uh, up to speed and have learned a lot, then we can handle the three and, you know, the four week is just hot dogs and soda, so.
The real limiting factor is not supplies, it's the instructor to student ratio.
Right, and the volunteers.
My services, however.
That's what we could use.
I'm not a very good instructor.
No, no, Lou's, Lou's our.
I, I, the, the reality is, if, if you listen to the instructions, you'll, you'll master as quickly as anybody. The problem is there's two, when the kids are wrestling with this, there's just too few of us to go around and help them one-on-one. And that's what we have to do, particularly with some of this instruction, so.
And then it starts at nine?
And we, we need you there at eight-thirty to help get set up. Lou is our instructor extraordinaire and he does an amazing job. He's, we've got quite bored with him. You ought to see the setup, it's cool.
For me, it's easy this or my neighbor Rufus House.
Come over to the fishing club.
This, hey, this is not as dangerous and it's not as painful.
Right.
Just one last thing, I just figured this morning, and including this group. Y'all want my crybaby? But we started this program in twenty-eighteen. We missed two classes, one for COVID, one for construction. And up to date, this, including this group, if they all show up, we'll have had three hundred and sixteen kids go through this program.
I was gonna say, it's a pretty good nod to you guys that you went from seventeen to accidentally having a registration and filling your.
Well, we had a hard time filling it in the fall because I got, I was pretty sick with surgery, you all know, and, and so we didn't get the word out as fast. And so I thought, we better open up soon. So we opened it up a month and a half ahead of time. And we had no idea that that other pro, that other thing was running behind the background. And so for us, and we've had meetings with the DWR and everything, and one of them commented to me, I was with a few years ago, but they said that she wouldn't tell this in the pub, to public, you know, with all the other fishing clubs in the cities. But she said that one in Far West is the best run fishing club in northern Utah, and that's all because of the volunteers that we have that support this. And we, the volunteers we have have been with us from the day we started, so anyway, that's all I've got. I know it took longer than.
No, you're good. I reported everything in the work session, so I don't have anything new. Um, if we don't have anything else, I have a motion.
I recommend we end the meeting.
And motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by other Greg. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, guys.
I was just gonna talk to Connor.
We can talk tomorrow. I didn't realize you were gonna have.
I didn't either.
I think I'm actually set. As long as you can tackle, I told you what I need now, so I think I'm good.
Well, either, we can just have a quick chat when, after the meeting anyway, it's only ten minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. What, the fishing? Well, no, if, if you're willing to help us.
I might.
If not, it's okay. Well, the meeting starts, well, the class actually starts at nine.